Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this March 21st, 2020 committee of the whole meeting. We're going to change it up a little bit, and as a result of that, we're going to need a roll call to establish a quorum and make sure we're physically present in that. So please call roll.
McHale.
Here.
Bud Metz.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Beriziano's absent.
Passessi.
Here.
Reyes is absent.
With four present and two absent, we do have a quorum this evening. And- Taking this roll call, Alderman Sanoyka is prevented from attending this meeting in person as a result of illness, and so with that, she's requested to attend this meeting remotely pursuant to Section 2-114 of the city code. At such time, I'd like to look for a motion and a second to allow Alderman Sanoyka to attend this evening's meeting.
So move, Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Alderman McHale.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the remote attendance? Okay, seeing no discussion on the matter, then we'll ask the clerk to please call roll.
Passessi.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Metz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With four in favor and none opposed, we will allow Alderman Sanoyka entry into the meeting. Alderman Sanoyka, are you on the speaker?
Yes, I am.
Okay, can you hear us well?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Then with the communication enabled, we will begin this evening's meeting. Just a reminder, the floor will be open to the public should there be any comments for 20 minutes to address the City Council on matters that are specifically on this evening's agenda. However, it doesn't look like there are any signatures on the sign-in sheet, so as a result, we'll begin with our first item. If there's any questions from council, we will then take them from there. So we'll defer right now to Glenn Cole to speak about the temporary certificates of occupancy and site plan improvements. Cole?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are you this evening?
Good.
Very good. So again, as you know, I'm Glenn Cole. I'm the city's Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director. I'm joined, of course, by my deputy, Alis with Quandrus, and this is my first presentation to you, so this is a very exciting evening for me. So as you know, I've been here with the city for two months. It's been great so far. Part of the reason I was brought on and this position was created was this council's vision for a high-performance community development function, to make it its own department, to provide extra resources to it, you know, to help promote, again, the things that come with having a professional community development function dedicated and well-trained, right? Giving excellent customer service to our residents, providing fast, cost-effective reviews while still enforcing our ordinances reasonably, making thoughtful future planning, and providing you with thoughtful policy advice as you steer where the city's going. Our first conversation, perhaps many on this topic that we've been requested to talk about, is how we navigate temporary certificates of occupancy and site plan improvements. I understand this has come up a couple times in recent memory, just in trying to balance, if I may. I think the council's had some of this discussion before in thinking about the requirements of our code, I think perhaps back in November and December, in trying to balance, you know, let's call it being developer-friendly, right? Supporting private investment, having reasonable goals, you know, trying to make sure we're an attractive place to do business here in the city. And then on the other side here, you know, trying to create extra public benefits as the result of development, right? Trying to make sure we have places that create a sense of place, that places that our community can be proud of, places that look like first-rate commercial areas that attract investment, attract business, attract commerce. To that also, I would add, so this is a good dynamic to think of, but these are just two dimensions, right? We're balancing others as well when we make these deliberations, discussions, and part of this too is just being enforceable, right? Coming up with rules and processes that are really efficient for us to manage, trying also to have a sense of procedural fairness, if you would, right? An applicant comes before the city, makes certain promises, the public hears it, and the public expects that they'll be kept. There's a whole other dimension of this too, which is public involvement and fairness that's kind of extraneous, but this is my mental model in thinking about how we approach these decisions is, you know, we're trying to find that sweet spot, right? We're trying to move our policies perhaps towards the middle of this little triangle. To that end, the council's asked us to look at how we can be a bit more fair, a bit more efficient, a bit more friendly in how we get businesses started, if you would. So they've come through the entitlement process, keep running into this friction right around the time where, you know, we're getting through when a business has maybe met the minimum standards of, you know, being able to start their business and occupy and get underway, but where they haven't maybe met all of the conditions or promises, if you choose to use that word, in getting started with us. And a lot of this decision-making, you know, we understand the council's direction. A lot of this needs to be done project by project. It's a lot easier to do than to talk about, if you would, so I hope you'll forgive me for being a bit vague, but our staff did look at this and does have at least four points, these are pretty simple, that we can use to make this process a bit more manageable, right? That can help us be a bit more friendly while still respecting the fact that, you know, we have limited resources, we have limited staff time, and that time spent enforcing these regulations takes away from other things we could be doing for the city. The first is very simple. It's just making our grants of zoning relief more flexible, trying to leave ourselves more room so where, you know, if there's a need to provide additional time, or if there's a need to make adjustments to some of our conditions, that we're not putting ourselves into poor places procedurally to do that, that we're not having to require, you know, extra hearings or going back to the start of the process to do that, but using some foresight just in how we structure these to make sure that we can make these course corrections as time goes on. The second, and I'll mention here the only one that really requires an act of the council directly to make possible by changing the city code, is expanding our use of temporary certificates of occupancy. Right now, so you need a certificate of occupancy to occupy a building, right? I finished my construction, this is safe, I've met the city's codes, and I can habit, you know, habitate it, occupy it. Today, the city code really only allows for a very narrow set of conditions where staff can give a temporary certificate of occupancy, right? You have to have had done everything except exterior landscape tasks, which you were permitted from doing because of weather, and staff can give you a certificate of occupancy to get you to good weather, and then you've got to have it done. Other codes, and certainly like our default international codes, let staff provide those in a much broader range of circumstances, give us a lot more flexibility to get people operating if they meet minimum standards, but still having the leverage of, you know, that certificate of occupancy expiring or being revoked if people aren't making acceptable progress, if they're, again, not following through on their promises. So changing our code to let us give these out in more circumstances would, again, help this goal. The third, and I should emphasize, we've, you know, city staff has used all these techniques at different times in different places, some of this is being more uniform, but the third is just making sure that we're keeping owners involved as well as tenants. At least in some of the time I've been here, there's been a few hiccups where, and, you know, how genuine this is, it's hard to say, but where an owner is claiming that they weren't aware perhaps of what their tenant agreed to, or perhaps claimed they didn't fully understand it. So part A of this is making sure we're keeping these owners involved. Again, you know, an owner before a tenant can come and apply to you, can get zoning relief, they need to sign the application, but some of this is just getting their contact information, making sure, much as with BBA or Mullen Motors, that we can show the paper trail, if you would, of here's what your tenant's saying, here's what your, you know, counterparty in your lease is saying, are you aware? Here's what we're proposing, keeping them in the loop as we go. And then this dovetails with this last point, which is really the sense of an unconditional agreement and consent. So you've said you'll follow all these agreements, but, you know, here's the slip of paper saying you agree to it, and you need to sign on the bottom line. So this has a little bit of a philosophical advantage, right? It's, you know, there's something to saying, well, you said you didn't understand it, but here's a piece of paper, but also kind of extraneous to this certificate of occupancy discussion, site plan discussion. These agreements provide the city with a lot more protection from liability, right? So months from now, if there was some dispute around the conditions that someone's being subjected to, or if a third party wanted to challenge the validity of the city's zoning decisions in court, you know, today, the applicant can sue the city, right? They can say that our process was unjust, or that there was some due process failure, or that there's many ways to get out of these arrangements. Also, you know, a member of the public can say that the city, you know, violated their due process rights, or so on and so on, and importantly, the city would be left bearing the cost of that legal defense. I would suggest, I think it's very fair, that if an applicant is getting the benefit of our zoning decisions, that they also need to carry the risk of paying for those things, and these agreements allow that to happen, which is important unto itself in addition to, again, the importance of making sure that we're navigating these conditions. So those are our four suggestions for you. Again, a lot of this, I think you'll see implemented more on a product, project-by-project basis, but these are four things that we would recommend the city adopt, and if the council would like to see that happen, we can start as soon as your next council meeting and put in some of these in the practice.
Thank you for the presentation on these four points. Does anyone on the council have any questions regarding any one of these four points? Alderman O'Brien?
Not to put you in your spot for the first presentation to council, but I know it's all figment of imagination or made-up project. What's another sample, because I know we recently granted the one for the temporary occupancy until landscaping could be done, what's another example? Like if we were to expand this, clearly it's got to pass Chief Sutter and Chief Nowacki, life safety-type things for occupancy, but what's another example that you can think of that we could help broaden just as we kind of start to frame this at future council meetings? Landscaping's a great one, is there another example?
You know what I wanted to ask to that point, if anyone wasn't going to ask a question. Two city council meetings ago, we did grant temporary occupancy, and that had to come before the city council, and from my understanding, it was because there was a variance attached to that project. Now, we understand that in that particular case, it was just the exterior landscaping and the pavement that needed to be replaced and paint stripes for parking spaces, but what can we do in line with that in order to augment this process for variances so they don't have to come back before the city council to slow it down?
Sure, so if I can take those in order, you know, there are a lot of perhaps exterior improvements or site plan improvements that fall into that category. So landscape and asphalt are great examples just because there's weather restrictions and you just can't do them in the winter. There are things like, for example, with the Legion project, you know, there are other site plan improvements as well, for example, changes to their traffic pattern, that they were waiting until that parking was striped to make. There's some, you know, protection around, so as you're coming down an alley, there's a wall and there's some utility items mounted to that wall, right, that a vehicle could clip, you know, potentially you'd have bollards and things inserted there. That's, you know, something that you could have chosen to wait until we had occupancy for, that, you know, is, you know, you're allowing them to operate in that interim period. You know, they're, I'm trying to think of a few examples.
Roofs.
And one-
Roof.
Roof.
Roof, yeah, roofs, a lot of aesthetic improvements. I think in one project I can recall, there was a requirement that an applicant tuck point, so there was masonry where there was, you know, the, I forget what the term is, but, you know, the grout was leaking down the face, and so of course, it's unattractive, but it doesn't stop you from doing the building. There's a lot of examples like that, and I think if we were to bring you an ordinance, we would spell out really just looking at standards or criteria, right? Of course, we want something that's safe, and we want to, you know, I think we'll try to design and bring you some standards that give you a lot of flexibility even for these circumstances we might not be able to foresee when we write the code today.
Great, thank you.
So back to my question. I know there was a lot there. When it comes to bringing a decision back before the city council as a result of the decision being guided by a variance approval, what is it that we can do within these four items here, or specifically with the line item B is in the packet, to expand opportunities to issue temporary certificates of occupancy, where it may not have to come back before the city council, but the staff has the discretion to go ahead and move forward with that? Because I think ultimately, the intent of this discussion was to enable expedience for both the developer and the city, to make sure that the process was as seamless as possible in order to keep the friction or dissatisfaction at a minimum.
Absolutely. So item B, temporary certificates of occupancy, that's one tool, but to your line of thinking this way, I really look at line item A, right? So a lot of how we, it's hard to illustrate, right, but when we write these variances, I mean, we have a great deal of flexibility in what we, how we structure our conditions and how we structure how people have to comply with them, right? So we could say that, you know, here's a general plan, and one of the conditions is that you submit your, you know, your more specific plan for, that's reviewed and approved by staff before it proceeds, or you get to the point of, you know, you can issue these variances long before we're at deep engineering drawings, or long before we're at full plan details. You can kind of keep zooming out with that lens and try to hit that sweet spot where you know enough about what you're approving to make a responsible decision. You know what the variation is you're granting, you need to know that for legal purposes, but you don't have to put so much detail in there that you can avoid some of these speed bumps that, you know, parts of the building have to move, or things that aren't really substantive need to change.
Sure, so I guess ultimately, my question is, if these four items are adopted, and moving back to line item A, making our zoning relief more flexible, is this going to enable the builder or tenant to move expeditiously with a change to receive temporary occupancy or temporary certificates of occupancy without having to come back before the city council when a variance is approved by the city council?
If the council wants to approve ordinances in that way, yes. You can give a lot of discretion to staff in allowing these things to move forward without having to come back before this body.
Okay, so then, in that case, when it's brought before the city council, a variance, when a variance is brought before the city council, it would be recommended to the city council in that ordinance that we enable the ability for staff at their discretion to allow or permit temporary certificates of occupancy should they meet the requirements that we've defined at a previous point in time in point B, for example, right?
Correct, yeah, variances or special uses we can also include in this context as well. The conditions tend to be imposed through the legislative process, both with the planning and zoning committee, as well as with the city council's final approval. The expanded authority with the temporary certificates of occupancy, as Assistant City Manager Cole explained, is one change that requires the city council to amend the code, which with tonight's support, we would proceed with preparing that ordinance to do so, so that we could, under the code, issue the temporary certificate of occupancy, and in addition, when we do have a variance or a plan development or a special use permit, the conditions that are written into that special use permit or variance can include the authorities that give staff the flexibility to work with an applicant as they are approaching the finalization of their project, or if something were to arise that, you know, supply chain issues that slowed down their ability to complete their site plan work, that staff would have the authority to be able to do that without returning to the council.
That's good, that's great, because I believe that, you know, as we move forward on the timeline, meeting in the future, that there will be future developments that require variances or special use, and it would be good if we can have that as a council, as an authoritative body, to know that they won't be calling any one of us should they be held up with an issue, but staff has the discretion to go ahead and allow these temporary certificates of occupancy without having to wait for a future council meeting. Alderman Bud Metz, do you have a hand up?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So would it be possible, the next time that we actually have a zoning variance brought before us, that if you're going to implement this process and make some kind of variable thing in there, that you would point it out when you give us the write-up so that we can understand the difference in the process and be cognizant of that fact as we approve it? That's the first thing. And then, second thing, the temporary certificates of occupancy, I'm assuming then that there's going to be a number of days, 90, 180, or whatever it is, so that, so that it doesn't, I don't want to say abuse is a strong word, but so that it doesn't slip past the council and that we actually do maintain some kind of control. So what would you suggest for a timeline for a TCO which all expires?
Sure, so to your first question, Alderman, the answer's absolutely yes. You know, there are two pending grants of zoning relief right now, where we can implement some of these when they come to you next Tuesday, and that would give us a chance to talk about that, the council can see just how it would look, and you can decide at that time if you need to see additional changes for second reading, or, you know, when you see it in text, if this is the approach you want to continue with. To your second question, it is a little tricky just knowing for the circumstances I, you know, there are so many circumstances that it's hard to put a number on it. For example, if it's November 1st, in all likelihood, someone can't get asphalt until July, right? I mean, they might be able to get it in, you know, April when a good season, or May or June, but, you know, you can't guarantee it till July. I don't know of a situation, you know, some of this is, we'll bring you some statistics on this when we present it to you for action. I would think up to, you know, somewhere between 180 days in a year is probably the maximum, but I'd also emphasize that, you know, we don't have to give all the way to that maximum. Our goal would to be to issue the shortest TCO possible, and potentially to issue a second one if we need to, but to, again, kind of keep the leash short.
Okay, so a follow-up to that is, I noticed in line item B in the packet, you know, it does use that asphalt example, and then if it's requested between November and June 1st, then the temporary certificate of occupancy expires by July 1st. Not to complicate the issue, but is there any way when there's a tenant requesting the temporary certificate of occupancy, and there are outstanding items that are on the exterior or maybe even inside, but they don't impose any health or human safety violations within them, that we put the onus on them to deliver us a deadline that's within reason, within like 60, 90 days, or 120 days, or what have you? And that way, they've committed to a timeline based on what they're comfortable with on their project and on their site, and if they don't meet it, naturally, we can explore an extension of sorts, but keep the ownership on the project and the contractors to keep the promise on the timeline that they believe would be appropriate, so long as it's within reason.
Absolutely.
Is that possible? I mean, is that common practice, or not even at all?
I mean, I think anytime you're imposing conditions on a property owner, I think, I hope that, you know, you're having a conversation with that property owner when doing so, or with that tenant, or what have you. So it's, we try to have a collaborative process.
And I only say that because I'm sure that there's, projects don't always finish at the same time. You don't have three projects here in the city that are wrapping up on the same date, so it's difficult to make the determination as to by which date they need to have the temporary certificate of occupancy expire in order for them to go back for the final inspection to receive the full, or, yeah, full certificate of occupancy. But just keeping the onus on the actual developer of the project might make it easier for the city, just because we keep them accountable to the words that they want to uphold with their schedules. Any thoughts on that from the council? Alderman Bud Metz?
Two, I've seen situations where TCOs ran three or four years, and everybody forgot about them, and later on, everybody was like, oh, we never realized. That's problem number one, but that was with a very large neighboring city. But also, are business licenses tied to the certificate of occupancy? And if we're issuing a TCO, when do we issue the business license? When do we renew it? Are we giving people an extended period of time without a business license if they don't have a full CO?
Sure, so I'll confirm this in the code, I'm fairly sure you can't operate a business without a license, right? And so I think the way the code reads, we would give that, you know, that business license to someone operating under a temporary certificate of occupancy. But of course, if we revoke that, then we're revoking business license as well, right? You know, I think we have a lot of levers to keep control of that situation.
Alderman Passessi?
Yeah, would it also be when, you know, let's say they, when they do go to renew their business license each, you know, year or whatever, that would be something you would check, would be, are they on a TCO, or?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Partially, I would say, you know, one of the, I think our previous system, the BSNA system used by the city had this ability, certainly the Tyler system does. One of the reasons we're investing in this new software is to make things like that more apparent to everyone, right? Sometimes, these things can live on one person's desk, and that desk gets shuffled away, or that person moves on to a different job, and these things get lost, and part of why we're trying to invest in these systems is to make that not happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman McHale?
So when you do decide to give the TCO, could, depending on how you decide to do it, whether it's, you know, you have 90 days to do this, or you tell me when you're ready to, you know, take care of whatever it is, will that be a part of the sign on the dotted line unconditional agreement with the property owner?
Yeah, I haven't seen it that often in that particular case, but you certainly could. The FC Legion, the FC Legion temporary certificate of occupancy will require an agreement just like that, so there's nothing that stops us from doing that.
Because if you're getting a TCO, and they know that they're going to have their parking lot done by, you know, July 1st, why can't it be in the agreement saying we'll be done by July 1st unless we discuss prior to this agreement being, you know- by July 1, unless we discuss prior to this agreement being, you know, coming to fruition? Just a thought. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions regarding these, any of these four items? Well, if not, we know staff supports the implementation of the four items, so I'd like to see those on the council who do, and as a result of having remote telephonic attendance, we're going to have a roll call vote on this. So for all those in favor of supporting these four items, will the clerk please call the roll?
Sunayka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmetsch?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pesessi?
Yes.
That's five in favor and none opposed, so these four items are, are supported by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
So bring us on to the second and final item on this evening's agenda, and that's the lead service line inventory discussion, and for this, we'll defer to Public Works Director Aaron Grosskopf and your presentation. Director, when you're here, you're ready.
All right, so, thank you, Mayor and Council, appreciate the time tonight. First off, I'd like to apologize while the PowerPoint's getting loaded up. If I touch my glasses a lot, they're new, I'm not used to them, so I'm very fidgety with them at the moment, kind of hurt the sides, but we'll make it through tonight. So, yeah, lead service line inventory discussion, very exciting. We'll walk you through here with just a little bit of the brief history of what's happened. Obviously, the full history of lead service and the Safe Water Drinking Act extends much beyond the four bullet points that I have in front of you today. I just wanted to touch on a few things that are going to be really relative to tonight. First off, lead service lines primarily installed late 1800s to around the 1940s. After that, they became really unpopular, once people started to figure out that lead has some pretty serious detrimental effects to human health. Luckily for us, Rolling Meadows was incorporating around 1950, so that's good news. 1986, the amendment to the Safe Water Drinking Act, or the Safe Drinking Water Act, lead service lines were officially banned with a two-year phase-out period, so by 1988, no one could use any lead service parts, solder, anything like that for installation. January 1st, 2017, Public Act 099-0922 required community water suppliers to submit annual service line material inventory to the IAPA. Through this process, they were able to determine that around 680,000 lead service lines at least still existed in Illinois, with a lot more unknown, so it could be potentially much more than that, which sparked, in January 1st, 2022, the Public Act 102-0613, which is the Replacement and Notification Act. So this is what brings us to you tonight, this is what the city of Rolling Meadows has been working on, and what we'll continue to work on over the next year or so. So, a little bit of an inventory timeline. As we kind of stated, January 1st, 2022, that Public Act was enacted, so we have essentially two years to complete, a complete material inventory of every single water service line that we have in the city. That's around 6,500 service lines. Right now, we are on track to meet our April 15th deadline of an updated material inventory list. That complete material inventory by next year, April 15th, has to include the verification of each and every single water service line. That means that we have to verify individually, both sides, private and public, that there is no lead, or there is lead, or whatever the situation may be for that service line, and document that. We'll get a little bit more into that in a little bit here. So, yeah, the requirements. Notable items, that wasn't, the inventory isn't the only thing. Actually, before I push on too far, I want to touch on this red portion down here, because I skipped over that. That is April 15th of 2024. If you do find lead service lines, that is the start of the replacement plan that we are required to do. So, that process of creating that replacement plan takes around four years, that's how long the IAPA is giving us. That is only if we find any lead service lines within the city. Now we can refine. So, other than the inventory, what did this Public Act give to us? So no more partial replacements allowed. That means if we find lead service on the public side but not the private, we have to replace the entire service line, all the way up to the main. Homeowner is still responsible for the lead service line replacement if lead is only found on the private side. And if, like I said earlier, if lead is found on the municipal side, we have to replace the entire line, and replacing any main, so when we do a water main replacement, we have to verify each and every service line that's connected to that water main, and if we find any lead, those lines have to be replaced at that time. Inventory requirements, so we, like I said earlier, we have to have all service lines on the public side and the private side. We have to classify which material it's made out of, usually that's lead, galvanized iron, copper, PVC now, and we also have new lead service lines identified and lead service lines replaced if you have any. Some of the deadlines, again, initial inventory, April 15th, 2023, we are on line, on time to meet that deadline, and then the completed inventory, April 15th, 2024. Public accessibility, once completed, we do have to have an online inventory, so we have to have an online map system, or a spreadsheet, some sort of way to communicate what that material is for each and every water service. And we also have to include the information on our consumer conference report, our CCR, that's posted every year on the city website. So ownership breakdown, this is a nifty little graphic, this kind of gives a layout from the water main to the actual meter, you can kind of see general maintenance from the main itself to the B box is on the city, or the community water supplier, and the going from the B box to the meter is typically on the homeowner. Again, on the bottom, you'll see that orange bar, that indicates that if we find lead service on our side, we do have to replace the entire line. Funding and public engagement, so this is a locally funded item for the inventory, not the actual lead replacement. Grant opportunities for the inventory do exist, we have looked into the, the one that we have found so far. Unfortunately, we do not qualify due to the MHI of Rolling Meadows being around 81,601 compared to the state average of 72,563. We will keep examining for any potential grant opportunities that do exist. There is, like I said, plenty of grants open for the actual replacement of lead service. Public engagement, so when we get to this verification process, there's a bunch of different ways we can do it, and as part of that, we will have to have a full-on public engagement. What we can do for this is use the city website, social media, newsletters, pamphlets, informational graphics, videos, numerous things to grant us to get that information out there to the public, and some of the ways that we can actually have the, you know, verify this is a part of sending out newsletters and pamphlets, and having them go through the process of finding the water meter, doing the simple test to find out what that material is made out of, stuff that we can walk the residents through. So how is Rolling Meadows doing? So this is the question, right? Actually, we're doing pretty good. So historically, and through all the records that we have, Rolling Meadows doesn't have any lead service lines, so we're in really, really good shape. However, the EPA trusts us, but I don't think they trust us that much. We still have to verify everything, so we will go through that verification process to complete our inventory. Everything besides items over two inches in size and installed prior to, I'm sorry, I misworded this, so we have to verify every service line that's under two inches and installed prior to 1988. Everything outside of that, over two inches after 1988, you do not have to verify, that's automatically considered not lead service. So we are, right now, going through the process of evaluating how to handle this with our current utilities division staff, as well as utilizing an outside contractor to assist in maybe some sort of combination of efforts in this, because it is a substantial amount of water service verification that we do have to do. Right now, as we go through our water main replacements, we are individually checking all of these service lines, as well as whenever we do any, you know, meter installs, meter repairs, we're also going through the time, taking our time to, to verify that as well. So as we go about our regular duties, we're taking the time to verify all of these lines. So in conclusion, Public Act 102-0613, that was created in January 1st, 2022, that instituted pretty clear timelines on the material inventory, that's what we were looking for. The city of Rolling Meadows is set to meet our deadlines, and city staff believes that we are in actually pretty good shape, given our historical knowledge and the record-keeping that we have. So at that point, I'm just going to, to close the presentation out and open it to any questions that you may have, but this time, we aren't seeking any direction or anything, this was just an information.
Yeah, thank you for that, Director Grosskopf. We, I guess we can look forward to the results of the audit, confirming our position that we have little to no lead pipes within our water system. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the council? If not, thank you for the presentation, and we look forward to hearing back.
Thank you.
Then that leaves us with the last and final item, and that's going to be looking for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Alderman McHale.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Any discussion on adjourning? If not, I'll ask for the clerk to call roll.
Sunayka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmetsch?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pesessi?
Yes.
With five in favor and none opposed, this meeting is adjourned at 8:06.